Good afternoon, members and to the viewing public in the local channel and as well as the social media and to our public here in the gallery. The chair will now call this second day session, second, second day, second regular session to order dated Wednesday, November 15, 2023. At this time, can we please stand for a moment of silence? Thank you, members. Madam Clerk, please go to the floor.
Representative Fadha?
Present.
Representative Fadha? Representative Fadhan? Representative Atta?
Present.
Senator Babalta?
Present.
Representative Benaventi?
Agua.
Representative Camacho Angelo?
Present.
Representative Camacho Diego?
Present.
Representative Camacho Joel?
Agua.
Representative Camacho Senti?
Present.
Representative Castro?
Stiga.
Senator Delion Guerrero?
Here.
Representative Flores Joseph?
Present.
Representative Flores Marisa?
Present.
Senator Magovnia?
Gaia.
Representative Manglonia? Representative Omar?
Present.
Representative Props? Chairman Sablon?
Yes, Stiga.
Representative Vilagomis?
Hello.
Representative Yanktamay?
Angiya.
Representative Yumo? Representative Manglonia? Representative Props? Mr. Chairman, we have 19 members present, two members absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please take note that Representative Manglonia is here by excuse and Representative Props will be joining us momentarily. So with 18 members present, we duly establish a quorum to proceed on our order of business. Next on our order of business is item B, reading and approval of the journal. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, we have one, Snail Journal 2307, first day, second regular session dated August 31st, 23.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and at this time I recognize the floor later for the proper motion.
Thank you, Chairman Sablon. I now move to adopt Snail Journal 2307, first day, second regular session dated August 31, 2023.
There is a motion offered by floor leader for the adoption of our today's journal, 2307, and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Adoption approved. Moving along, we are now in item C, public comments, and at this time, the podium is open for anyone here, the public in the gallery who wishes to make testimony, please state your name for the record. Thank you, and you may proceed.
Good afternoon, Chairman, distinguished members, prestigious legislative body of Snail. My name is Juan Ego. I'm currently the acting chairman for the Cannabis Commission, Conmo of Cannabis Commission, and I am here before you today to respectfully and kindly ask for assistance to provide funding to our office to procure a vehicle for the Cannabis Commission. Since the inception of the office in 2018, the office has been operating without a vehicle and staff has always been using personal vehicles and their own money for fuel expenses regarding work matters at the commission. Things are relatively moving quickly at the commission. There's things that we are working on regarding the laws and improving our industry. However, we believe that it's very hard to function knowing that we don't have any vehicles for any inspections to be done or any site visits or to route paperwork for staff. So with that, I just leave you guys with that request and thank you guys for having us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ego. The podium is to open for anyone here, the gallery that wishes to make comments. There happens to be none. So we move forward in our order of business and we are now in item D, introduction of local bills, and at this time, I recognize Representative Manny Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I'd like to introduce House Local Bill 23-21 to reappropriate $4,026 allotted under Saipan Local Law 19-3 and $40,334 allotted under Saipan Local Law 20-26 and for other purposes, introduced by myself and several others.
Thank you, Representative Manny Castro. At this time, I recognize the vice chairman, Representative Roman Benaventi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce House Local Bill 23-25 to reappropriate 240, $204,500 allotted under Saipan Local Law 20-26, specifically under Business Unit 7186W, $190,000 allotted under Saipan Local Law 20-26, specifically under Business Unit 7186Y and $190,000, $190,400 $109,000, sorry, $109,400 allotted under Business Unit Local Law 21-7, specifically under Business Unit 49630 and for other purposes, introduced by myself and welcome others to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. At this time, I recognize again Representative Manny Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce House Local Bill 23-27 to reappropriate[756.51][757.26]$50,000 allotted under Saipan Local Law 20-26, Section 2 RL, specifically under Business Unit 7190D and for other purposes, introduced by myself and several others.
Thank you, Representative Castro. And at this time, I recognize the floor leader to make the proper motion so that we place all this local appropriation to the bill calendar.
Mrs. Small, Chairman Sablon, I move to place House Local Bills 21, I'm sorry, 2321, 2325, and 2327 on today's calendar for action.
There is a motion offered by our floor leader and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion adopted. Moving along in our order of business, we are now in item E, introduction of local resolutions. There happens to be none. We are now down in item F, messages from the governor. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, we have Governor's Communication number 23-20 through 23-24.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on messages from the governor. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we are now on item G, messages from the mayors of Saipan and Northern Islands. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, we have Mayor's Communication number 23-08 through 2310.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on messages from the mayors of Saipan and Northern Islands. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we are now in item H, reports and communication from heads of department and agencies. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, we have Department-Agencies Communication number 2307 and 2308.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on item H. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we are now in item I, House Communications. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, we have 16, House Communication number 23-30 through 23-45.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on House Communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we are now in item J, Senate Communications. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, we have Senate Communication number 23-07 through 2312.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on Senate Communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we are now on item K, delegation matters. Madam Clerk?
We have three, Mr. Chairman. Delegation Matters number 2353, 2354, and 2355.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on delegation matters. Ready? Thank you, members. We are now on item L, miscellaneous communications. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, we have 19, Miscellaneous Communication number 2351 through 2369.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on miscellaneous communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along in our order of business, we are now on item M, there happens to be none, standing on committee, reports on standing committees, none on item N, reports on special and conference committees. There is none on item O, unfinished business, none on item P, resolution calendar. We are now on item Q, bill calendar, and at this time, I recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I now offer a motion to pass House Local Bill number 2321 entitled to reappropriate $4,026 allotted under Saipan Local Law 19-3 and $40,000, $40,334 allotted under Saipan Local Law 20-26 and for other purposes. So move.
Short recess. Yeah, yeah. We're back in session and before we went into recess, we are on the bill calendar and at this time, I recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I withdraw the main motion to, to, to pass House Local Bill number 2321 and I offer instead a motion to suspend pertinent rules in order to place the, to pass the House Local Bill on the bill calendar today.
There is a motion to suspend pertinent rules in our rules for the suspension, for the first and final reading for all House Local Bills in the bill calendar. It has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion adopted. Recognize the floor leader.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I now offer a motion to pass House Local Bill 2321 to reappropriate $4,026 allotted under Saipan Local Law 19-3 and $40,334 allotted under Saipan Local Law 20-26 and for other purposes.
There is a, there is a motion offered by our floor leader to pass also Local Bill 23-21 and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? Madam Clerk, please go to the floor.
Representative Fadha?
Yes.
Representative Fadhan? Representative Atta?
Yes.
Senator Babalta?
Yes.
Representative Benaventi?
Agua.
Representative Camacho Angelo?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Diego?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Joel?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Senti?
Yes.
Representative Castro?
Hungan.
Senator Delion Guerrero?
Yes.
Representative Flores Joseph?
Yes.
Representative Flores Marisa?
Yes.
Senator Magovnia?
Hungan.
Representative Omar?
Hungan.
Representative Vilagomis?
Yes.
Representative Yanktamay?
Awar.
Representative Yumo? Representative Yumo?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Hungan.
Mr. Chairman, all 19 members present voted yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With all 19 members present voting in the affirmative, House Local Bill 23-21 hereby passes the delegation. Thank you. At this time, I recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I now offer a motion to pass House Local Bill 2325 entitled to reappropriate $204,500 under, allotted under the Saipan Local Law 20-26, specifically under Business Unit 7186W, $190,000 allotted under Saipan Local Law 20-26, specifically under Business Unit 7186Y, and $109,400 allotted under Saipan Local Law 21-7, specifically under Business Unit 49630 and for other purposes.
There is a motion offered by our floor leader for the passage of House Local Bill 23-25 and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? Madam Clerk, please go to the floor. Yes.
Representative Fadhan? Representative Atta?
Yes.
Senator Babalta?
Hungan.
Representative Benaventi?
Agua.
Representative Camacho Angelo?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Diego?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Joel?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Senti?
Yes.
Representative Castro?
Hungan.
Senator Delion Guerrero?
Yes.
Representative Flores Joseph?
Yes.
Representative Flores Marisa?
Yes.
Senator Magovnia?
Hungan.
Representative Omar?
Hungan.
Representative Vilagomis?
Awar.
Representative Yanktamay?
Awar.
Representative Yumo? Mr. Chairman?
Hungan.
Mr. Chairman, all 19 members voted yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With all 19 members present voting in the affirmative, House Local Bill 23-25 hereby passes the delegation. Recognize the floor leader.
Mrs. Small, Mr. Chairman, I now offer a motion to pass House Local Bill 2327 entitled to reappropriate $50,000 allotted under Saipan Local Law 20-26, Section 2R1, specifically under Business Unit 7190D and for other purposes.
There is, there is a motion offered by our floor leader for the passage of House Local Bill 23-27 and it has been seconded. At this time, I recognize Representative Manny Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to offer a floor amendment. The amendment how to amend House Local Bill 23-27 is hereby substituted with House Local Bill 23-27, substitute one. Consistent with the intent of the foregoing amendment, I hereby also move to allow the legal counsel together with the delegation clerk to make further non-substantive technical amendments that are strictly necessary to effectuate the intent of this amendment.
Before the second, do you have any copies for the members?
Amendment.
A short recess.
Recognize the floor leader.
This is my seat, Mr. Chairman. I now offer a motion to pass House Local Bill twenty-three twenty-seven, entitled to reappropriate fifty thousand dollars allotted under Saipan Local Law twenty dash twenty-six, Section two R one, specifically under Business Unit seven one nine zero D, and for other purposes.
There's, there is a motion offered by our floor leader for the passage of House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-seven, and it has been seconded. At this time, I recognize Representative Manny Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to offer a floor amendment. The amendment, um, how to amend House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-seven is hereby substituted with House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-seven substitute one. Consistent with the intent of the foregoing amendment, I hereby also move to allow the legal council to gather with the delegation clerk to make further non-substantive technical amendments that are strictly necessary to effectuate the intent of this amendment.
Before the second, do you have any, uh, copies for the, uh, members?
Amendment.
A short recess.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With all nineteen members present voting in the affirmative, House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-five hereby passes the delegation. Recognize the floor leader.
This is my seat, Mr. Chairman. I now offer a motion to pass House Local Bill twenty-three twenty-seven, entitled to reappropriate fifty thousand dollars allotted under Saipan Local Law twenty dash twenty-six, Section two R one, specifically under Business Unit seven one nine zero D, and for other purposes.
There's, there is a motion offered by our floor leader for the passage of House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-seven, and it has been seconded. At this time, I recognize Representative Manny Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to offer a floor amendment. The amendment, um, how to amend House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-seven is hereby substituted with House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-seven substitute one. Consistent with the intent of the foregoing amendment, I hereby also move to allow the legal council to gather with the delegation clerk to make further non-substantive technical amendments that are strictly necessary to effectuate the intent of this amendment.
Before the second, do you have any, uh, copies for the, uh, members?
Amendment.
A short recess.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With all nineteen members present voting in the affirmative, House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-five hereby passes the delegation. Recognize the floor leader.
This is my seat, Mr. Chairman. I now offer a motion to pass House Local Bill twenty-three twenty-seven, entitled to reappropriate fifty thousand dollars allotted under Saipan Local Law twenty dash twenty-six, Section two R one, specifically under Business Unit seven one nine zero D, and for other purposes.
There's, there is a motion offered by our floor leader for the passage of House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-seven, and it has been seconded. At this time, I recognize Representative Manny Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to offer a floor amendment. The amendment, um, how to amend House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-seven is hereby substituted with House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-seven substitute one. Consistent with the intent of the foregoing amendment, I hereby also move to allow the legal council to gather with the delegation clerk to make further non-substantive technical amendments that are strictly necessary to effectuate the intent of this amendment.
Before the second, do you have any, uh, copies for the, uh, members?
Amendment.
A short recess.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With all nineteen members present voting in the affirmative, House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-five hereby passes the delegation. Recognize the floor leader.
This is my seat, Mr. Chairman. I now offer a motion to pass House Local Bill twenty-three twenty-seven, entitled to reappropriate fifty thousand dollars allotted under Saipan Local Law twenty dash twenty-six, Section two R one, specifically under Business Unit seven one nine zero D, and for other purposes.
There's, there is a motion offered by our floor leader for the passage of House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-seven, and it has been seconded. At this time, I recognize Representative Manny Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to offer a floor amendment. The amendment, um, how to amend House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-seven is hereby substituted with House Local Bill twenty-three dash twenty-seven substitute one. Consistent with the intent of the foregoing amendment, I also hereby move to allow the legal council to gather with the delegation clerk to make further non-substantive technical amendments that are strictly necessary to effectuate the intent of this amendment. I'd also like to talk a little bit about this, uh, this local bill. Um, although this bill is for projects in Precinct Two and is, um, funded by, um, Precinct Two funds, uh, it will affect a lot, um, up, you know, the, the goal is to, uh, construct a modular restroom at the Sugar Dock Beach area in Chalan Canoa, which many members of our uh, community go and, and frequent, and currently there's no restroom in that area. There's no shower. Um, so it only makes sense while Beach Road is being, uh, fixed that we prepare this so that it can be aligned and ready, so a sewer line can be connected to those, uh, restrooms, um, so, which will save the government money and also uh, keep our people in our, in our precinct and beyond Precinct Two happy. Um, additional twenty-five thousand is for the installation of uh, streetlights and public address systems in Precinct Two, especially in the recreational areas and roadways. As you know, they're currently working on Susupi Beach Park. Um, right now, that, that area is very dim. It's, it's dark, and we want to align, um, the projects that are ongoing on Beach Road, along with, uh, right now Parks and Rec is, is leveling out that park to make it more conducive for the community. So when the park is finally open, we also have the appropriate lighting and systems in place for our community members. Um, and then the additional fifteen thousand, um, is also for other recreational activities. Um, as you know, right now, we have, we have a situation in our economy, so we really have to beef up some of our community events to make sure that our constituents are, 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 are doing things productively and happy. Um, family functions are...
Thank you members, we are back in session and before we had a recess we were at the bill calendar and there was a motion offered by our floor leader for the passage of House Local Bill 23-27 and at this time I recognize Representative Castro.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a floor amendment to House Local Bill 23-27 is hereby substituted with House Local Bill 23-27 Substitute One. Consistent with intent of the foregoing amendment, I also hereby move to allow the legal council to gather with the delegation clerk to make further non-substantive technical amendments that are strictly necessary to effectuate the intent of this amendment. I'd also like to talk a little bit about this local bill. Although this bill is for projects in Precinct Two and is funded by Precinct Two funds, it will affect a lot, you know, the goal is to construct a modular restroom at the Sugar Dock Beach area in Chalancanoa which many members of our community go and frequent and currently there's no restroom in that area, there's no shower. So it only makes sense while Beach Road is being fixed that we prepare this so that it can be aligned and ready so a sewer line can be connected to those restrooms. So which will save the government money and also keep our people in our precinct and beyond Precinct Two happy. Additional 25,000 is for the installation of streetlights and public address systems in Precinct Two especially in the recreational areas and roadways. As you know they're currently working on Susupi Beach Park. Right now that area is very dim, it's dark and we want to align the projects that are ongoing on Beach Road along with right now Parks and Rec is leveling out that park to make it more conducive for the community. So when the park is finally open we also have the appropriate lighting and systems in place for our community members. And then the additional 15,000 is also for other recreational activities. As you know right now we have a situation in our economy so we really have to beef up some of our community events to make sure that our constituents are doing things productively and happy family functions are out there. So thank you again for your support on this local bill.
Thank you Rep Castro, do I hear a second? There is a motion offered by or a substitute offered by Representative Castro and it has been seconded, discussion on the substitute offered to the floor. Ready? All those in favor please say aye, those opposed say nay. The substitute is adopted. So House Local Bill 23-27 is now House delegation substitute, Madam Clerk? Delegation substitute, House substitute one. We're back now in the main motion, discussion on the main motion. Ready? Thank you members, Madam Clerk, please go to row.
Representative Fatah?
Yes.
Representative Odon? Representative Fatow? Senator Bobota?
Yes.
Representative Inaventi?
Hungan.
Representative Kamatu Angelo?
Yes.
Representative Kamatu Diego?
Yes.
Representative Kamatu Joell?
Yes.
Representative Kamatu Santi?
Yes.
Representative Castro?
Hungan.
Senator Delia Guerrero?
Yes.
Representative Flores Joseph?
Yes.
Representative Flores Marisa? Senator Magovnia?
Yes.
Representative Omar?
Hungan.
Representative Probs?
Yes.
Representative Villagomis?
Yes.
Representative Yanktumai?
Awar.
Representative Humo? Representative Fatow? Representative Flores Marisa? Representative Humo? Mr. Chairman?
Hungan.
Mr. Chairman, there are seventeen members voted yes, three members absent.
Thank you Madam Clerk, with seventeen members present voting in the affirmative, House Local Bill 23-27 Substitute One hereby passes the delegation. Thank you member that took care of the bill calendar, we now move along on our order of business, we are now in item R miscellaneous business and I recognize the Senate President.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to go on record, I understand that we just passed a bunch of House local bills which is good because it would benefit our community. However, I just want to restate my request from prior leadership meetings for SNIO requesting for a revisiting of Saipan Local Law 20-26 where most of these fundings are coming from when we do legislations for reappropriation. And my concern is I'd like to know again request from your office to seek from the Secretary of Finance exactly what is the outstanding owed money to the SNIO delegation from the central government and also when we talk about certain business units that perhaps maybe we could provide more information on what particular projects were being funded prior to reappropriation of existing or current bills that we are addressing and which we also passed today and in prior sessions. I think this is very important because we need to go back in time and see whether what seems to be the obstacle for completing certain projects that were appropriated funding under these particular Saipan Local Law 20-26 to make sure that community projects are not falling behind and that we don't have to be constantly going through reappropriation of legislations and pushing back those prior projects again on the books. So that is my concern and hopefully we could get some more updated information regarding this particular funding account, thank you Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Madam President, duly noted, the Chair would make some follow-ups with the Secretary of Finance. Any further in miscellaneous business? Ready? We are now down on item S announcement, the Chair would now announce that we have folks from the Maranas Got Talent that wishes to do a little bit of performance for us, the members of this delegation, so after the session when we adjourn, I hope you guys have time for them, the Maranas Got Talent group and team and management managed by Mr. Danny, Daniel Aquino, Gosly Tulumor and Arlen Regis, oh Daniel Quintagram, my apologies, former congressman. Is there any other announcement? Ready? We move now to item T adjournment and at this time I recognize the floor leader.
This is Masi, Chairman Sablon, I move to adjourn today's session subject to the call of the Chair.
There is a motion for adjournment offered by floor leader, it has been seconded, discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor please say aye, those opposed say nay. Thank you members, we are now adjourned.